This conference will now be recorded.
Good. Alright, so Tuesday, December the 8th, let's open our meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The roll call please.
Bruce, Francis.
I'm here.
Christopher Farrar.
Present.
John Orr.
Present.
Lum Kwong. Myrna Patrick.
Present.
Nadia Gardner is excused. Robert Strickland.
Here.
Clancy Adams, present. Julia Decker.
Present.
Gail Hendrickson will be joining us. She is with a person at the counter and she'll be with us as soon as she's free. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll take a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, who do you want to do the second then?
Myrna does.
Myrna. She has...
It's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Take another opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Some business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not on the agenda. Do we have anybody signed up to speak from the public?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, so we'll move on to the... Minute. November the 10th.
Are the minutes in the packet?
Well, it's two sec. Yeah, it's two sec.
I am not seeing them. So I probably will abstain because I don't see them.
Okay.
It's printed on both sides of the paper.
Yeah.
I don't have a little blue marker under the number one, which would typically indicate I could just click and go to them, but I...
They're on page two and three. Of the packet.
On mine, the very next thing is the Gail Hendrickson, December 8th. Goal to draft one review.
I move that the minute approved is mailed.
I abstain.
Okay.
Because I can't see them.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented.
I move the minutes as presented.
I second.
Okay, so the motion's being moved by Myrna and seconded Chris, I think. So all those in favor?
I abstain. I don't know if that queries the quorum. But I don't have them in front.
There's three of us and plus John. John voted for it, I believe. So yeah, it passes. We've got a quorum. Yep, four. It's majority. Okay, thank you. So one abstention and four people voted for. To the comprehensive plan update, review of goal two, draft one, including the comments from the Department of Land Use, Constellation, and Development of CLCT. Want to take that? Take it. Somebody's at the front counter that wants to give it that update.
So Gail would be the person typically giving the update on this. She is at the counter with someone who's come in. So what we have basically is review of goal two. This is a draft one review. This is the first draft probably of many. So we started this in February of 2019. It does seem maybe sort of like, you know, a thousand years ago. And yet it hasn't been. It's only been a year, less than even. So she had attached a first draft rewrite as attachment one. She included the statewide planning goal two for just, you know, background information as attachment B. So we've got attachment A, which we probably should be having you look at. Also, I believe you received this morning an email from Commissioner Nadia Gardner with her comments on goal two. Did anybody not receive those?
I did not because we have not had internet and don't expect to for another hour and a half or so.
Okay.
But I can listen to it if you want to read it.
Okay, it's a couple of pages. I can try and summarize for you if you'd like.
Mm-hmm. Or you can read it either way.
Well, let me just try and flip through here real fast. It's not real long. So she's sorry to miss the planning commission today. She reviewed the draft rewrite of goal two and had some initial thoughts. She said she's unclear how the old detailed exemption documents fits into the revised goal. Generally, she's saying we know from more than 40 years ago that urban, suburban, and ex-urban development is expensive to the county flood control, water, and sewer districts, and not preferable for a variety of community livability reasons such as transportation, traffic, location of schools, jobs, services, clean and abundant drinking water, fire susceptibility. Also, it results in the loss of working lands as well as impacts nearby working lands. So she gives an example residents complain about and sometimes stop farm smells, pesticide use, and fires from working farms and forests. So she believes that we should do better going forward and try to focus development in cities and support working lands outside them. She noticed numerous times in the older document that notes that properties are not large enough to be farms and that this is no longer the case. Smaller farms as small as five acres can be profitable. Small woodlots as small as 20 acres can be profitable. So she doesn't want to discount them as productive and automatically allow exceptions. Let's see. For already existing rural communities, we should look at what is not yet developed and determine whether it makes sense to keep allowing development in the same way. In my nearby area, this would be Commissioner Gardner's nearby area, we are on our way to having development with 50-plus driveways and streets along Highway 101 from South Cannon Beach to Levanna to the Arch Cape Tunnel. She says this is not safe and is the definition of sprawl. Outside Arch Cape, the houses do not have clean and abundant drinking water. It's coming through timberlands and they're all on septic. Of course, Arch Cape has a water supply and has a sewer district. They have to drive to get any job school or to get to any job. Schools are 20 minutes to the closest one or to a store. They do not have public transportation. She says she's sure much of the same can be said for other rural communities. This is our opportunity to review our options and integrate small growth concepts into our plan. On page five, she takes note of the term vacation homes should be used rather than second homes because one doesn't actually know how many homes someone has. Some have more than two. And also, they are not always actually residential, but maybe vacation rental businesses. She notes the planning commission has recommended that affordable housing development be focused within city limits as much as possible because of the availability of jobs, transportation, sewer and water, and the expense of ex-urban development. We are interested in exploring it already in already established communities, but she doesn't feel comfortable with the blanket statement that the county must also continue to identify areas where accessory dwelling units may be able to be allowed. On page 27, she said notes that the term citizen is now considered to be exclusory and people do not have legal citizenship might feel excluded. In order to encourage more participation, she recommends using the term community advisory committee rather than citizen advisory committee. She feels that an annual meeting is insufficient in areas with significant development such as Arch Cape, Falcon Cove. More participation will lead to better outcomes. She asked that the Southwest Coastal CAC be again be a standing committee and that makes recommendations to staff and planning on applications. Miles Crossing and others may also need more active committee if they have interest. Let's see. Object two, policy A, brochures are only one way to share information. Expand to cover brochures, websites, social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube videos. Policy B, cooperation is not only to make the development faster, but also to ensure adherence to rules on different levels. Please note, let's see, object four, I think we should set a review period. It should be comprehensively reviewed at least every 20 years. Object five, I agree with wetland buffers, but for climate change, this should be more comprehensive. For example, fire-resistant building materials and buffers, limiting development in and next to forest land, bigger ocean and estuary setbacks informed by current scientific modeling, limiting deck building on oceanfront and estuary areas, which she notes is currently a setback loophole. Stream setbacks, building, but also native vegetation, especially tree cover for shade and large wood, limiting development in areas with inadequate year-round drinking water abundance, and encouraging tideland restoration in areas with degraded dikes and tidelands and/or sea level rise is making protection impossible. That's basically, those were her comments. Pretty fast, I'm sorry.
Well done, Julia. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. That's a good summation of what was put in there. Do we wish to go over her comments and discuss them because I've got a few things that I don't agree with.
I would like to hear those, Bruce.
Okay. So let's go down to very bottom. She says that it should be the county must continue to identify areas where ADUs, accessory dwelling units, may be able to be allowed. Does she give an alternative to the word must? What's her alternative? Did she give it?
She did not provide one.
Right. So, you know, I'd like to have an alternative put in there, otherwise must, in my opinion, should stay. Anyway, the other thing is back to the word citizen. Why are we penalizing the word citizen again? I think John Orr had a few comments last time. I said that I've never ever felt suffer from participation in county politics and I'm not a citizen. John, have you got any comments on that? Hearing none, I'll ask Myrna. Myrna, you had comments last...
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was a little... I feel that the term citizen, you know, has a venerated history. It's an ennobling kind of notion. But for recent, you know, political weaponization and polarization, which we've heard too much about, the term citizen calls to people to be their best selves within a community. So I don't feel like there's any need for a change of it. There just needs to be a change of attitude in some parties in the manner they address each other and the respect they give.
And still maintain the word citizen in there.
Yes.
Right. That's the way I feel. I feel exactly what you just said. Chris? Oh, is it? Yeah, Chris.
I'd just like to say that I agree with Nadia on virtually everything she wrote. I think all her points are very well thought through and make a lot of sense. And that includes changing the word citizen to community member or some other phrase that is less inflammatory under the circumstances that we actually live under in these times. And I would say that on the issue of the ADU statement that she was concerned that there was a blanket statement that the county must continue to identify areas. I agree that that's of concern because it has the potential for pushing development into what should remain open space or rural lands and without housing developments. And the list goes on. I agree with all of the statements she made about the different objectives, especially the one to do with climate change that needs to be expanded. And some of her suggested points to include in that objective are good ones. I could probably add a few my own, but for now, I'll just leave my comments at that. But I'm strongly supportive of all of what Nadia submitted.
I concur with Commissioner Farrar's commentary.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, going to your comment on citizen. If you look in the dictionary, it says a citizen is an inhabitant of a city or town. So that would include everybody. So I have no problem with the word citizen. So that's, just want to make a comment on that. So proceed as you wish.
Yeah. No, thank you. That's the way I feel too. Then back to where Nadia says, I think we should set a review period for compulsory, sort of a comprehensive review at least every 20 years. I thought that that was part of the periodic review. Isn't that what's going on in the periodic review?
No, it's not because the county is no longer required to do periodic review. So I believe our last one was about maybe 2003 or '04. What I would recommend though is a period of less than 20 years. I would say, you know, every five to seven years, you should maybe not be doing a comprehensive review, but definitely a review to see if you've met your goals and policies and to update it. And I think if you do a five to seven-year review consistently, you'll keep your comp plan up to date. Our problem is that we just have never done, we would pick a piece and then look at it as part of periodic review, but never really went through, not a deep dive like we're doing right now because we have to, but even just going through to see what we've accomplished and haven't accomplished. So that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, are there any other comments about this? Anybody else want to comment on it? Chris?
I had a few questions that maybe Gail can enlighten me on. They're more of a general nature about this whole process. First off, I see reference made here in the goal to revised wording and elsewhere. I think it's come up in this whole process of revising the comp plan. That 1980 was the first comp plan. And as I look through the gigantic packet we got here for this meeting, I find that there's reference to a comp plan that was approved in 1969. So I'm wondering, when was the county's first comprehensive plan? And is it correct there was one in 1969 predating this 1980 version?
It couldn't have been in the sense that statewide land use planning was not adopted until about '78?
'73.
Thank you.
On page 58 of the packet. Let's see. Says in Klatseb County since the county's first comprehensive plan was adopted in 1969. And that's under goal two of the land use planning county-wide element. It's not essential that I get an answer to that. I was just curious, I guess, about it. The other question I had is with all this, this packet is huge and a lot of it relates to exceptions that were made to the 1980 plan where certain lands were designated one way or another. And some, a great number of lots were removed or accepted from those classifications. I assume those now have some legal standing with that exception and that under revising our comp plan now, we're not to review those decisions made then. But do we look to new exceptions under this revision process? Or was that a one-time process where exceptions were submitted and then adopted?
So the county or any property owner can apply for an exception at any time. It is a very high bar though. So I guess my first question back to you would be what would we be looking for an exception for? Is it for housing? Is it for industrial lands? And depending on what your answer is, then there's a process that we would go through. We'd have to inventory what lands we have available. And then we would have to show to the state that there is no other areas in the county that can provide that same type of land use without going through the process of a goal exception.
Okay, well, I don't have any idea in my head about suggesting some exemptions or exceptions. I was just more interested in whether people might come forward in this process and on their own, ask for an exception to a lot that they may have or a piece of property they may have. I was just trying to get clear on whether that is something that's routinely done when a comp plan is revised. So it sounds like unless somebody comes forward on their own, we're under no obligation to look into that or put the word out to the public that that's a possibility.
The goal exception process is not something that should be undertaken lightly because what we're really saying is that we are going to be taking farm or forest lands out of their current use and accepting them from their current use in order to do something that's more development-intensive. So while the comp plan process can certainly examine that, there has to be a very clear reason why we would want to undertake that process. And we'd have to very clearly show through an inventory process that there are no lands available either for commercial use or industrial use or residential use. And in this particular case, you know, we'd want to be looking 20 years out in that process. And so looking at the next 20 years and saying, well, say we've got 500 acres of commercial land in the county, but based upon an analysis, we predict that we're going to need 1,000 acres of commercial land to support unincorporated residents. And then you would want to undertake a goal process. But just to undertake one, to say, well, we might need something in the future, so let's do it now since we've opened up the comp plan, is not the reason to do it. Does that make sense?
Have you heard the expression destination resort raise its ugly head while you have been an employee of Klatseb County, Gail?
Yes, I have. Yeah, specifically, it came up with regard to Bradwood, Clifton area and the Metolius project.
Okay, well, that's helpful, Gail. That gives me the information that I was looking for. I have another general question and that has to do with the six kind of land-type designations that are used within our county. The sort of urbanized areas, the forest areas, the ag areas, and so on. There's six of them. Are those six Klatseb County's choice? Or is that something that's recognized throughout the state and that each county or each jurisdiction would use those classifications?
You know, that's a very good question and I don't know that I have a definitive answer for you. My understanding and just hearing what other counties are doing is that they have similar nomenclature for their development. But for example, what we call rural lands, a lot of other counties call rural residential. The resource zones are pretty fixed. You have farm, you have forest, and you have farm forest lands. So, you know, you can call them farm forest or agriculture, but those three are at least pretty fixed by state statute.
I find it a little bit confusing between the... There's three categories under developed land or land for development. And I understand why there's those three there and it makes sense. But then there's the, one of the six categories is this rural lands, which sounds very similar to the non-urban areas in the development category. And I'm not that clear on what the distinction is really for between rural lands number six versus these rural areas that have been identified in the county.
I think we ran into that around Jeffers Gardens, you know, and it was a curious thing that if we're within a baseball throw of residences, it was one thing. And if it were just beyond how far you could throw a baseball, it would be the other one. But it was kind of that kind of a difference.
Well, I don't know if it's worth rethinking the six basic classifications or not. But if we're doing a comprehensive rewrite of a comprehensive plan, I just wonder whether these six designations are really what we want. I just throwing that out as food for thought when you look through this document. The other general point on the actual revision, the wording in the revision, to me, it seems as though it would be helpful thinking of somebody just picking this document up. John Q. Public or Mary Q. Public out there, picking it up and reading it. It seems like there should be more in the introductory paragraph about goal two and why we have it. It just sort of jumps right into the, very quickly into the six land categories. And I think just four, five sentences in there that explain why the state thought that's an important goal to have and to kind of lay it out. I think it would make it easier for somebody to see where you're going with this, the rest of that discussion under goal two. And then the final thing I noted is that there's a number of pages that are blank that were labeled as having a map of some of the... I can't remember which one they are, the rural the rural communities maybe? And are there maps for those or are those being developed and we just don't have them yet?
Yeah, they're in the process of being developed. I mean, we have all the information. It was just a matter of staff time to be able to pull them apart and put them in a usable... readable map form.
Do, do they exist simply as graphic but non-digitalized? And, and what I'm saying is that as I recall, our zoning maps used to be, there was only one real zoning map and it was not digitized. It was kind of the holy grail tucked away in the planning department. And it was the paper thing that you would unfold. And has that been replaced with digital maps? Or, or is that still the sanctum, sanctorum?
I will let Julia address that. I think this is a project near and dear to her heart.
The holy grail is on the wall over here. We, we have not got the maps digitized yet. That's a project that's underway. It is not as high a priority as a couple of other things, so it's going more slowly. But we have the original 1980 whatever map in, that was hand drawn, hand colored, all of that on the wall over here. And when other things don't agree or if something causes you to go, hmm, then we go over to that document. And I have found it's really useful to me, for me to have my cell phone and take photographs of it so that I can then blow it up on my computer screen and, and see it much more clearly. Yes, we are still using it.
Hang on to it because I know there are weird situations where you cannot look at the assessor's maps and see how things look on your, on your wall map.
That map is, yeah, it's, it's, it's a historical document. We will never ever get rid of it or recycle it or anything like that. We will always have it. It may be superseded by a digitized version, but this historical document is always going to be part of, part of the wall. I think it's probably going to be here as long as the building is.
A lot of people take for granted that the assessor's map reflects the same information. And that's just a peculiarity that is, is too far into the weeds for me to go further right now.
Well, I think that it spares a lot of institutional knowledge. I think that's, you know, the reason for having that older map. You know, to go back and research what was, what is now gives you a good basis finding out those facts. So I, I like the fact that they did the old maps. They're a good reference.
You can also be very obnoxious going to the county surveyor's office and asking where is county road such and such. That basically disappeared, but, but the, you know, there, there is no very smooth transition between 1856 and the present.
I think we're all trying to get there. Julia's done a lot of work on it. Okay, any other comments then? If not, where do you want us to go from here, Gail?
Um, we will incorporate the comments that we received today and then put them along with all the other comments. You saw that there were written comments as well from, I believe Barbara Earls at Warehouser that were included in the packet. And so we will work on a second draft of goal two and put that back out for public comment at some point in the future.
So Lam, Lam's arrived. Lam, did you have any comments that you wanted to make on this draft?
Unmuted. Uh, no, I, I don't have any comments on that.
Okay, well, thank you. So let's go on to the special project update.
Okay, so a few updates from last month. We have scheduled our work session on short-term rental revisions to February 24th and that'll be a noon workshop with the board of commissioners. On the strategic plan, the board of commissioners held a second meeting on December 1st to kind of finalize that plan. What will happen next is that I believe there will be a discussion on December 9th and then it will also go back to the new board in January for final approval and prioritization of the projects that were listed in there. And I want to thank Chris because I know that he was on the committee I was on, which was environmental quality. And so I want to thank him for his time. On our TGM grant, it's moving very, very slowly. We finally got the final intergovernmental agreement from ODOT back in November and have gotten that signed and sent back to ODOT to complete the, the initial part of the process. So I would expect that sometime in January, we will begin to see more action in terms of kickoff meetings and public meetings and other meetings and data gathering in conjunction with that. Let's see, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM will be the final reading of the code consolidation project. It has been obviously through the planning commission over the past couple of years. It's been reviewed by county council and who provided us many comments. And it went to a first reading on November 4th. There was an earlier work session back in August with the board just to familiarize them with the project. So tomorrow night will be the final reading and we will start the new year hopefully with a consolidated code. Then the resiliency project, let's see, so we had two RFQs out in the month of November. One was for a consultant to do a feasibility study and sort of a conceptual development plan for the North Coast Business Park properties. As part of that, we are updating the wetland delineation that goes along with that. And then a separate RFQ was put out to select a firm for the, to conduct a public works facilities needs study to basically identify how big of a building they're going to need, how much acreage they're going to need, what sort of transportation or other utilities and amenities that they might need to support the relocation of their facilities out of the inundation zone. So we are currently reviewing the responses to that RFQ and we will be meeting internally as staff on Friday to go over those and make a recommendation on choosing a consultant. And that was, those were all of the project updates. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions in that?
I have, I have a question on the, the resiliency project. Is, is there an environmental study on the land at the, at the site for the building?
Yes, so they are in the process of doing the phase two environmental right now. And I believe there's an update on the project page.
Okay, any other questions?
Is that talking about the quote unquote sorting yard?
That is the one, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so project status report.
Yeah, so before we move on, Chair, I just wanted to point out for anybody who might not be familiar, the county has set up on its webpage, a whole separate section regarding the resiliency project. It includes links to presentations and meetings that we've had. Any documents that have been completed are up there. We have a list of ongoing project expenses. So the geo, geo hazard report has been completed and that's on the website. We have some information from the county council about being able to lock gates on the main line. The phase one environmental, Mr. Quong, that's already been completed, is already up there. And so you can go through all those documents at any time.
I, I don't know where, where it fits, but I have a question to point at Gail. Recently, there was a questionnaire having to do with dunes, you know, where they were seeking input from residents of the Dune area. It seemed like the person, like the state employee asking the question had a real focus only on the ocean front. You know, so, so kind of the whole concept that dunes extend two miles back to Clatso Bridge really was not what she was talking about. You know, she was really focused on oceanfront erosion kind of issues. So yeah, just saying where, where anyone who takes a look at that might tune, you know, might try to attune the state that that's not all that we have here is a Falcon Cove, oceanfront home concern about dunes. Period.
Okay, okay. I will note that and I can pass that along. If there was a question in that, I, I failed to.
There, there, it, it was more pointing out that the, the way that her talking about it was done showed that it was highly focused on oceanfront properties. Period.
Correct, correct. And I would agree with that. I think that's a fair assessment or an accurate assessment.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a fair assessment. And I think the reason for it is because the active dunes on the four dunes on the beachfront, that's where all the action is at the moment. I'm involved in the Laney's Port of Appeals case, you know, right now in front of where I was. So I know that also Cannon Beach is involved in making big changes to their dune requirements. So I think that it's a hot topic and that's why the active dune line is a primary concern and looking for any involvement. I think that's why it's at the top of the hit parade.
People who are, have strange knowledge like Commissioner Farrar, who is on the Clatso Toilet and Water Conservation District, which basically includes the Warrenton Dunes Conservation District, which has an ordinance having to do with active dunes. The Line and Weber Estates happened to involve the disappearance of the active dune line, you know, of the no vegetation line. The, the fence posts for that continued down through our front line for the war on terror through Camp Realea, but they were disappeared in the vicinity of Line and Weber Estates. And so if they, as, as to what is, what is not, the active dune is still worthy of intelligent focus because the, the soils take about 500 years to build just an inch of soil out here on the dunes. So, so there, there may be some forest death, you know, and occasionally there'll be exercises about fires, fire suppression at Camp Realea to, to deal with. It's very easy to turn a stand of shore pines and beach grass back into what it was 100 years ago of blowing dunes. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying it, it is not something as simple as, oh, I can see that that's not an active dune because houses are built there. You know, I, I certainly down in a different, in Manzanita, you can see where people built on what clearly was active dune. And we haven't had that trouble here for a long time. But it, it's, it, it is not a simple matter and I know that Bruce isn't trying to make it a simple matter of what's the active dune.
I, I agree with, I agree with you that you can turn a conditionally stable dune into an active dune just by changing the environment, cutting down grass, cutting down trees, cutting down herbicure, falls type. Yes, you can reverse that procedure and that's definitely something that should be noted. And I agree with you, it's something that should be looked into and make sure that it doesn't happen because I know that where the active dunes are impacting buildings right now, it's quite a controversy. You know, I've been involved in that for the last 20 years and it, it's quite a mess. And to get clarification on it, it is unfortunate that we've had to go to the Laney's Port of Appeals to try and get some sense out of them. So yeah, I agree with you. We don't want to turn the dunes that you're talking about, the conditionally stable dunes, into an active dune. So I, I agree, that's something that should be noted.
We, we've also had the curiosity of for a long time, we were assuming accretion all along Sunset Beach, simply because it had accreted. And, and as to who owned that accreted land, it tended to be ruled that it, the ownership reverted to the upland owners who were then suddenly had an incentive to build on them. So it, it's a, it's a, it's a nerdy topic that people coming fresh into the area haven't really wanted to have to think about. But that, that's why we have Gail and Julia.
It depends where the vegetative line is because the area that's to the west of the vegetative line is under the jurisdiction of Parks and Rec. It falls underneath their jurisdiction. So it doesn't matter how much accretion occurs west of the vegetative line, it does not fall under the home ownership of the upland homeowner. It's under the Parks and Rec.
I'd forgotten on the build, no build line that ran, you know, even who besides poor Commissioner Farrar is even responsible for administering that? You know, it, 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 Commissioner Farrar has one of the rare, you know, has a ordinance where he has the power to en, en, enforce any activity on the wrong side of that no builds line, but which is really esoteric. And, and I, I'm quite sure that not one person in a hundred, and I'd be surprised if one person in a thousand in Clatso County knows what the hell wherever I speak. And that may include Commissioner Farrar who's in charge of it.
That does include Commissioner Farrar. Sounds like a field trip is in order.
Fair enough. Okay, so I guess now we're on to the project status report.
All right, just a couple of highlights on some changes. You'll see that the Arch Cape Deli, they have gotten demolition and grading permits and the development permit and building permits are under review, at least as of the time this was prepared about a week ago. Julia, did you have any updates on that project?
At this time, I am working on putting together their materials for their vesting on their CUP. They've submitted a, a lot of stuff basically that needs to be organized in such a way so that we can. so that we can document the, um, amount of money that has been spent so far. But it appears to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And the project is coming in at nine hundred and some thousand dollars, so under a million. Um, so they should meet the ten percent without issue.
Well, it's nice to see them moving ahead.
Okay, and then the only other update that we've got is a few months ago, we had the CUP for the Test Meteorological Tower. They have now submitted their development permit and building permits and, uh, site plan application. And so those are under review by staff right now as well.
Now, that's good. All right. So other business, does anybody have anything on other business? Anybody has other business? Well, it's up to me then to talk on other business. Uh, as a lot of you are aware, I'm retiring at the end of this year. And, uh, last week, uh, we managed to secure, um, a house in Texas. And my house here in Oregon is going to be up for sale. And I'm going to be moving down to Texas. So I'm going to have to put my resignation in as now I'll be no longer a property owner in, uh, in Clapton County, it appears at this time anyway, that I won't be. So I guess my question to Gail is, uh, if we are going to have our, uh, January meeting for having an idea who's going to be chair and vice chair and all of that. Uh, did you want me to stay on to run that meeting to establish who's going to take over? Uh, before I have to, uh, terminate my position here on the planning commission. Something that I really hate to do, but I do have twenty-eight or thirty years, I think, uh, attendance here. Uh, something that I've, uh, been very privileged to do. But, uh, anyway, I just thought that, uh, if Gail can give us some guidance on how you would like to hand this over. Uh, you can send me emails or whatever, but, uh, I'm just going to make the announcement that it looks like I'm no longer going to be a homeowner in Clapton County.
Okay. Um, well, first of all, Bruce, I think I can speak for Julia and myself in saying that we will definitely miss you. And we definitely have appreciated your years as chair. I know for me, coming in as someone completely new to this whole planning system in the state, I think you've found, uh, very much a help to me, so thank you. Uh, with regard to your second question, uh, so the January meeting would be scheduled for January twelfth. I don't know if you'll still be here or not. Um, but the bylaws do require us to elect a chair and vice chair at that first meeting of the year. So in January, we would have that on the agenda anyway. If you, uh, resign before the January meeting, then Nadia as vice chair would step up and run that meeting and then conduct the elections for chair and vice chair.
And so I would comment, but seeing Nadia is not here to make that assertion. I would probably like to say that I will run that meeting in January. So it gives everybody an opportunity to come up to the communications on it. And, uh, we can reestablish the pecking order in that January meeting. So I think it would be good because I will still be here. And so, uh, I'll actually be retired for twelve days. So I'll be able to run that meeting. So I think that probably what I would do is make a suggestion that I stay on until that meeting and run it. And, uh, then we can establish, uh, who's going to be the new chair and vice chair. And, uh, and then I can, uh, uh, resign after, after that, uh, meeting. Is that a fair enough assessment, Gail?
Yes, that certainly is fair.
Okay, well, it's been a sweet for me as I've seen that. I'm having a hard time dealing with that because I really, really enjoyed the opportunity to serve this community. And I find it very hard to, uh, step back from it. But I know that we've got a lot of good people involved. We've got great staff and I know that the procedures will continue on. Uh, I thank everybody. Okay, are there any other comments?
I, I have a quick question. I don't know if anybody has an answer to this, but, um, due to the new commissioners, county commissioners coming in, I'm wondering if that's affecting any of our planning commissioners at all or not.
We, everybody who is on a, uh, on a, uh, committee that is subordinate to the county commission serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. So, uh, there is absolutely no requirement for those committee members to resign or do anything. All it takes is for the Board of Commissioners to express their displeasure with membership of anybody on a committee. Uh, and to simply replace them. So it is, uh, you know, part of our, I guess it's in the bylaws, is that we, we serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. And it's the same thing with the, uh, regional advisory committees. Uh, they're all, uh, simply, you know, they, they, they're not, they're not there for a fixed period of time. They're, uh, there until they displease the Board of Commissioners. So, uh, I, I know that, uh, two of the county commissioners expressed their displeasure uh, of, of my existence, uh, back in June, when they voted against appointing me. Uh, and we'll see where it goes from there. But, but that, that's my news for you, Liam, is that you simply serve at the pleasure of a, um, majority of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so any other comments?
Uh, just one quick one, just one quick one, Bruce.
Yeah.
You're not off the hook so easy now that we're doing these, uh, go-to meetings. I expect to see you tune in from Texas and, uh, continue on.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of doing that, but the problem is I would not be a homeowner. There's, there's a chance, let me put it there, it's not a hundred percent sure, but I want to give everybody enough forward notice. Uh, let's say there's a difference of opinion in our family as to whether we hold this house here or not. I want to hold on to the house, be a snowbird. And my, my wife wants to move down to Texas because she's a Tex. So.
She, she can vote down there and you can vote up here.
Yeah, right. So anyway, um, I, I think that, uh, you know, the best thing is that even uh, with the fact that I could operate under this, uh, Zoom meeting atmosphere down there. Uh, if I don't own a house in Clapton County or property in Clapton County, I'm no longer allowed to be on hold.
Do you, do you have to be a homeowner? You know, is it still, you know, that sort of thing where property ownership is mandatory? Or is it a, a residence issue? You know, you know, I, from, from back in slavery times and, uh, uh, Constitution, there, there was a big issue on property ownership. But I, I would have thought that that was an adequate concept, that as long as someone, didn't have to be a citizen. They just had to be a, a resident of the community to, uh, to, to be on the planning commission.
Yeah, I thought you had the property.
You know, I, it, it, you know, it was different for the Skipton Water Control District. They, they archaicly demanded that you be a property owner. But I, I didn't think that was the case for a planning commission.
Okay, well. But that's up for debate, I guess. But, uh, you know, maybe between now and the next meeting, we can resolve those issues if everybody wants to, uh, do that. But, uh, personally, I think if I'm down in Texas, it wouldn't be fair to everybody else that I'm still hanging on, you know? Like I say, I've given twenty-eight or thirty years and, uh, it's time for younger and smarter heads than mine to be, uh, spanning here. You know, uh, in fact, that was one of the questions I was asked. Why do you want to be a planning commissioner? And I said, well, I want to be a planning commissioner while I'm still young enough to be able to make decisions without becoming senile. And well, that was in my forties, you know, now I'm in my seventies. It's kind of like, uh, you know, I want to escape senility. But anyway, thank you, everybody. Uh, I guess without any other business, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
We will miss you, Bruce.